Trying to promote you and it won't do it.
So I was told that we had an audio problem. Hopefully everyone can hear me now, so I'll just start over. So everyone, welcome to those who are attending our meeting this evening. And as always at our meetings, we have two periods for community comment. And it's just that an opportunity for community members to comment on items that appear on the agenda. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. If you would like to comment, we ask that you put your name and address in the Q and A feature in Zoom, and you'll be recognized to speak. Any questions or comments that are put into the Q and A will not be read. If you would like though, to just direct an email to the board, you're always welcome to do that as well. Our address is board@irvingtonschools.org. And the board responds to letters from the community in due time. As I mentioned, we do have two comment periods. So if you make a comment in the first period, there's not a guarantee that you will have the opportunity to comment in the second period. We try to give everyone an opportunity to comment if they would like. And given the number of people who are attending this evening, and you may not have an opportunity to speak in both. So I just put that out there. So if people choose to comment before the presentation, they may not have an opportunity to comment after, depending on where we are time wise. So obviously, on tonight's agenda is a presentation from Dr. Harrison about the process for looking at expanding attendance in schools. And it is really meant to be a presentation that's going to talk about the process, the timeline by which recommendations will be made, and the procedure that the district and the board is going to follow in looking at that opportunity and how we're going to evaluate the recommendations that come forward. Tonight is not the meeting where we're approving any sort of plan or having that discussion. This is really meant to be another touch point in the process that, as Dr. Harrison talked about at our last meeting, when we expanded athletic participation, that that was, you know, one step in the overall process of looking at the student experience about expanding opportunities, not just in athletics, but potentially hopefully in other extracurricular activities, but also looking at the larger question of in-person attendance in schools and whether that's something that we can increase in a appropriate and responsible way. You know, as we all, as a board, expressed at the athletic discussion, that it's something that, as a board, we're interested in and we want to look at. Obviously, the state and the governor put athletics out there first, and I guess in part due to everyone's season. And when those decisions have to be made, that was something that was put towards the front of the decision making. But as a board, you know, we, the idea was not to have that, you know, be to the exclusion of everything else. And it's certainly something that, as Dr. Harrison will talk about tonight, that there's a process around. So with that, if there's anyone who wishes to make a comment at this point, we're now at our first community comment period. So as I said, if you put your name and address in the Q and A feature in Zoom, you'll be recognized. And there is a period for comment after the presentation as well. So first, we have Michael Blanton, 9 Strawberry Lane in Irvington. If Mr. Blanton can be promoted to speak, please.
Hi, thanks. I've read through the material, so I'm skipping ahead to comment on the plan forward. And I guess one thing I would urge the committee that's being formed to consider is that to not consider April 30th a, you know, the nominal date of starting, but to, if things can be determined, that things can be opened safely to, you know, to start that as soon as it is feasible and to aim for that rather than, rather than April 30th specifically. And so that's my, my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Lippman, 56 Manor Pond Lane in Irvington.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to follow up on the last community member comment. My comments along the same lines. I just wanted Dr. Harrison or someone to explain in the course of his presentation tonight, what is the scientific basis for requiring teachers to be fully vaccinated before return to school full time, particularly for the Dow's Lane students? Because I, and I'm sure many of you are aware of many, many scientific articles that have come out in the last month or two, including various CDC studies showing that the risk of transmission in schools is significantly lower than community spread, and if not negligible, in particular, the risk of transmission from young students to adults is next to nothing. So prioritizing Dow's Lane students returning before April 30th, perhaps before each and every teacher is vaccinated, presents little to no risk. Whereas the risk of these young learners staying remote and hybrid for more than a year has been well documented in many other articles, which I'm sure you've seen. And I wanted to point out that many other school districts very close by, such as Chappaqua, Scarsdale, and Armonk, have had students full time since the fall, before teachers were vaccinated, and they haven't had any transmission from students to teachers. And Edgemont is having kindergarten back full time as of next week, and K through 2 back full time by mid-March, as is the Rye School District. So I'm just, again, reiterating the last commenter about why we need to wait till the end of April and what is the scientific basis for requiring teachers to be fully vaccinated when other school districts are successfully mitigating risks through masks, barriers, distancing. And it's been well documented that that's sufficient in schools and that vaccination is not required to protect teachers.
Thank you. Not seeing any other comments at this time. I'll turn it over to Dr. Harrison to start on the presentation.
Great, thank you. So good evening, everyone. And I am really pleased to be able to facilitate this presentation and discussion tonight. And I frankly want to thank Mr. Blanton and Ms. Lippman for their comments because I think they appropriately frame a lot of the discussion that we're going to have this evening. As the community knows, that this presentation had been posted late yesterday. So many of you have seen it. And, but I want us to pause and let's make sure we take time to listen to the conversation that ensues and the narrative that is constructed around each of these individual slides. So when we think about where we are today, and if we think about why the purpose of schooling is here, and we think about the vision that we have in our schools, we know that our students need to benefit from in-person attendance, that the interaction with their peers, support staff, and their teachers is going to enrich their experiences, is going to support their mental health and emotional needs significantly. And we want to make sure that we have opportunities for participation and co-in the extracurricular activities throughout the school experience. So when we think about where we are today, regardless of timeline, we want to think about conditions that exist in other school districts, we can. But what I am proud to say today is that we're initiating this process for our children today. We are making this a priority. But in doing so, I have set out with three tenants, three tenants that I have communicated rather passionately over the past six weeks through my communications, through the weekly newsletter, in these very Board of Education meetings and in my weekly Facebook Live communications. And the reason we've done this, and the reason I have taken this position, is because these are extra layers that be able to support the safe expansion of student daily attendance in our schools. So in doing so, we recognize that the vaccine has been an amazing, important evolution in combating the coronavirus. So with that vaccine, we recognize our faculty and staff members, everyone who works in schools falls into that priority category 1B. But in looking to be able to acquire that vaccine, it has been very, very difficult. So we're fortunate to recognize that where we are in this timeline is that our teachers have had the opportunity to not only sign up independently through the State Department of Health to be able to be vaccinated, but in our partnership with Westchester County, we had last Monday a vaccination clinic that was hosted locally, where our teachers were invited to go. And we had well over 100 folks attend that. So when we think about where we are today, we think this is an important measure. Science isn't telling us that it has to happen, but common sense is telling us that it's important for it to happen. So there's going to be staff members that choose not to receive the vaccine, whether it's for medical reasons or their own personal reasons. And as a district, we can't require them to be vaccinated. But we recognize that the ability to staff our schools is going to be critical and that we don't have substitutes. We don't have enough aides and monitors to be able to fill classrooms if staff members are out. So when we think about where we are, the vast majority of our staff members are in process of receiving the vaccine, whether they've been vaccinated, have both doses or a single dose at this point in time. And when we think about that process, if you receive Pfizer, you have to wait three weeks before the second dose. If it's Moderna, you have four weeks until the second dose. And then we have a waiting period of approximately two weeks before one is considered to be immune, I'll say with some air quotes, immune to the coronavirus. So that said, we're looking at a timeline that does bring us to the end of March. But recognizing, as was stated, we're not in a position necessarily where it is required, but it is smart planning. I need to provide for the health and safety of our staff as well as our students. Once we're in that, a model where we have an opportunity to be able to increase student attendance, we need to be smart. We need to be able to monitor the health within our school communities and develop metrics that will allow us to understand how we are doing. When we think of those efforts that we can undertake to mitigate the spread of the virus, we need to make sure it's working. We need to evaluate that. So we're going to look to have surveillance testing. And I want to say that we're in a great position. Today, we received the extension of the County Department of Health Limited Laboratory License for Administration. We are starting to administer surveillance testing within our athletic program, and we're expanding that across the district as we go into, into March. So when we think about these first two tenants, two things that I thought were important that I've articulated within our school community for the past six weeks, we've really cleared two significant hurdles. In one, access to vaccine has been made available to all of our staff members in Irvington. We have the support of New York State when it comes to surveillance testing. Not only did we receive that license today, we received our first delivery of tests. And we are supplementing what is being provided to us by the county by ordering some additional ones to have on the ready to support our efforts. And then when we think about that other hurdle, is how are we navigating guidelines? So we can sit back and think about what CDC says, and we'll talk about that in a minute, and what New York State Department of Health says. But we have to be able to navigate through that web of guidance to ensure that we're doing the right things and that we're providing safe spaces for our children. But the bottom line is that we recognize that our children need more time in person or on site to support their learning. They must resume their regular social interactions with their peers, and they must have the opportunity to participate in all that school has to offer. We're thinking about curricular instruction. We're thinking about social experiences. But music, the arts, PE, they're all a critical part of our students' experiences and are essential, essential to our students' lives. So when we think about where we are today, and some may ask, why are we doing this today? Why we didn't do this sooner? The fact is that we've been working hard to ensure that we're maintaining safe school spaces. And we have to reflect on what has been done so far and how this reopening plan that we generated through a collaborative process with a series of four representative, community-based stakeholder committees have developed a plan that have kept their schools safe, that kept their schools operational. And in doing so, we have a model now, and a model that has evolved. When we think we started out, we had only a hybrid model where our students were attending in Cohort A or Cohort B, with certain students with our greatest need in Cohort C that were attending four days a week with the other two cohorts attending two days a week. We made an adjustment in looking at our K1. Our K1 then switched to an AM PM model with our youngest learners attending school four days a week in an AM PM model with half-day learning. And then we continued that model of hybrid, two-day-a-week in-person for grades 2 through 12. All of our students, remote, with a very valuable flex day, as we've talked about in other board meetings on Wednesdays. And then we had a shift just a couple of weeks ago, where we look at students in grades 2 through 5 that were in ICT classes, being able to attend four days a week. So we have been on a process of increasing daily student attendance. And when we think about those, just those three grades alone, we've seen 40 more students attend school four days a week, in contrast to two days a week. So I want us to reflect on this process that I just talked about. We talked about the shifts in K1 from our original plan, from only two days a week in person to four days a week, albeit half-days. We're thinking about our ICT students, in-class support students, now attending four days a week at the elementary level. We continue to offer the 100% remote option for students, where we have approximately 14% enroll right now. This continues to shift as needs surface in families and as that open enrollment period, so to speak, arise at the end of each grading period. We've taken advantage of the use of technology to be able to support distance learning. We've provided extensive professional development and collaboration on these new learning models that has been pivotal in the success that we've enjoyed thus far. We continue to demonstrate some flexibilities with the use of our schedule to maximize in-person learning. And I want to draw our attention back just earlier this month, where we had two snowstorms where we're able to make adjustments to our schedule and repurpose that Flex Wednesday, which ordinarily would have been a remote day for in-person learning. And at the bottom line of all this, we've provided for the health and safety of our students and staff. And as was stated earlier by one of our community members, we are not seeing examples of in-school transmission. So when we're thinking about where we are and why now, why not sooner? It has been important to understand the evolution of the virus, our ability to mitigate risk in the school district. We've seen how the Department of Health has evolved in their guidance, which I've shared with the school community. We've gone from places where if you had a single case of COVID in a classroom, that entire class was being quarantined, to today where we're evaluating, literally workshopping each and every case that surfaces to identify who those close contacts are, looking to apply the new revised state guidance to only look at those folks that were within six feet for an extended period of time, being longer than 10 minutes within a 24-hour window, or those that were close when a mask was not on, such as during a meal period. The evolution of that guidance, the evolution and the science behind the virus and our understanding of the virus and the guidance that's granted to schools by the Department of Health has placed us in a position where we now know how we can better manage it and we can keep kids in school more regularly. Certainly, the timing of the vaccines being available is making everyone certainly more comfortable. It's going to mitigate the risk of our faculty and staff members contracting the virus, which is going to be critical. But when we think about where we are, we have to make sure we're continuing to comply with all the guidance that is available to us. And the compliance that we have is not with the CDC. CDC certainly is an incredible wealth of resources for us. But the guidance that we have to comply with is that which is set by the state of New York. And as we all know, the CDC put out new guidance just a few weeks ago. But the New York State Department of Health has not revised their guidance to mirror that. So we work within the confines of the guidance that is available to us. When we think about this journey, when we started off and were planning for the reopening of school, it was collectively agreed upon throughout the region with the Department of Health that because of the uncertainty, because of the risks that were perceived to be present at the time with the spread of COVID-19, that the application of six feet of distancing and a mask was necessary. That was a determination that was made in collaboration. But there's been a greater understanding of how we can manage all of that, and there's been evolution in thinking. So when we think about all of this, we are in a different place today, a place where I believe we can safely expand student daily attendance. So when we think about this, there's all series of different guidance that we have to consider. And we certainly can't deny that it exists. But the things that we have to keep an eye on is the guidance that particularly points to social distancing, mask-wearing, and occupancy limits. And when we do so, there's some conflicting guidelines out there. So we can think about what has come out from the CDC. We can think about the guidance that has been before us from the Department of Health for some time. But we know there's a deep body of research by reputable organizations that I've displayed here, the World Health Organization, American Academy of Pediatrics, Harvard, Brown, so on, that tell us that we can manage schools safely with three feet of social distancing, with mask-wearing, and all those other precautions that we've already implemented here in Irvington. Just recently, on Monday, as superintendents in the region were meeting with the Department of Health for Westchester County, as well as the county executive, George Latimer, they spoke as to how they are going to support districts to safely implement their plans, regardless of social distancing standards that have been applied or agreed to be applied in the past. So this is the opportunity to utilize the expertise in the county's Department of Health to be able to support us in that journey forward. So when we think about where we are and we think about the guidelines that are before us, the New York State Department of Health does provide us latitude to consider six feet of space in all directions or use of appropriate barriers between individuals. So there's something important to think about, appropriate barriers. So we can apply polycarbonate dividers, barriers between students on desks, between students and staff members, and reduce that spacing. The Center for Disease Control, though, puts out conflicting information that's saying that six feet should be maximized whenever there's great risks that are present, that six feet should be applied everywhere. But we have to be mindful and consider the national landscape around the discussions that have been going on about students returning to school. When we hear our president talk about the need for kids to be in school, I want to say it's a no-brainer. We know children need to be in school for academics. They need to be in school for their mental health. But we have to be mindful that our president is talking to a nation where 40% of its children are not in school at all. He's talking about children returning to school for the first time in a year. Our conversation is talking about our children who are attending school two days a week, or in some cases, four days a week, returning to that direction of full traditional attendance in our schools. We have to be mindful, folks, that there's context behind all this. We have to look to the science. We have to look to the guidance and the requirements we have to follow. And then we have to see how we can apply them here in Irvington. So in looking at this, there's a process that we need to, to really lead here. Tomorrow, we have the first meeting of our reopening committee, the steering committee, the committee that was behind all the work that we see today that's enabled our children to safely be in school this school year. They're meeting tomorrow evening. Based upon that work that we're going to do tomorrow, we're going to make the determination whether we need to bring back all of our other subcommittees regarding social, emotional learning, curriculum and instruction, and then generally operations, or whether we can manage it in the smaller subcommittee and move this initiative forward. I talked about the vaccines being important. We're there. So check, folks. We've made that progress. We're talking about finalizing test protocols and securing test kits. Check. We're there. Now we need to develop a recommendation. And I want to be clear in pointing this out here. I want to be reasonable in where we're going. And I say I have a target date of March 23rd to deliver a recommendation. It doesn't mean that we're going to have a determination that's made, a recommendation that's made by the committee, that we're going to wait till March 23rd. If the opportunity presents, we'll move forward sooner. The idea of implementation, I heard our two neighbors that spoke a little while ago that said, let's not wait until April 30th. But what I want to note here is the slide says, by April 30th. So the language here is saying that we want to be there, but it doesn't mean we're waiting to that date to get there. But what is really critical for us, and when we look at this process in a visual sense, is that we need to have the engagement of our stakeholders to make sure we're doing this in a smart fashion. There's a lot to work through. We just simply can't flip a switch and say, hey, everybody, all our students get on the buses tomorrow. We need to be able to provide for the safe spaces in our schools. We need to be able to fit the desks in the classrooms. That means we're going to have to contemplate what furniture has to come out of classrooms, where we're going to stow that furniture. How are we going to feed 600 kids in a building within a two-hour window when we've only been feeding 300 at a time? We have to consider how we are rolling out the surveillance testing and know that parents, we're going to need you to give new consent, in contrast to that which you so willingly offered earlier in the year when the governor introduced the yellow zone, orange zone, red zone plans. So there's lots of process we have to go through. As was said in referencing the guidance earlier, we know that the guidance provides for the flexibility for us to go to less than six feet. But as that particular statement that I cited referenced, it talks about protective barriers. We have to source, order them, install them in our district. We have to come up with for the approaches of how they're going to be used. So you could say, well, how are you going to use a divider? Well, in our elementary schools, we're going to purchase them. We're clearly going to install them on their desks. But when we get to our secondary schools, it's a little trickier. We want to make sure that they're safe. We don't want a student in one period to cough or sneeze on a barrier. And then the student in the next period come in and adjust it and inadvertently touch it and then touch their face. So we have to come up with methods of how these will travel with students, how we'll have personalized barriers that'll be used each and every day, and how they'll be safely and conveniently stowed from day to day. There's layers of things that we have to work through and things that we can overcome. But we need to make sure that we're digging into all these areas. So when we think about the planning that goes into it, this is the charge that's before our reopening steering committee tomorrow night. We're going to look at the variety of health and safety protocols that we have to revisit, that where there may be challenges, or you know what? There may not be. We may be fine with how we are today, but we have to consider what they look like. We have to consider what a snack break in an elementary school looks like versus what lunch looks like. What does it look like when there were 10 kids in a classroom, but now 20 children in a classroom? We have to consider all these different things. We have to consider how we provide more support when all students are coming back. We have to think about what instructional needs may be before us. We want to think about those extracurricular and co-curricular experiences and how we can start to return our students to normal engagement in those areas too, but do so in a safe way. And we have to consider transportation. Clearly, more children are going to ride the bus, but not everybody's going to ride the bus, which only means that we're going to have more parents. But not everybody's going to ride the bus, which only means that we're going to have more parents driving their children to school. And parents at Dow's Lane, you know the traffic headaches that we deal with already. Parents at the campus, you know what that's like. We need strategies to be able to mitigate that. Or we may have our children in every day, but we're going to have them sitting in traffic on Broadway for an hour into the school day. So these are all things that we have to worry about and think about. So when we think about this approach, it doesn't necessarily have to be an all-in approach. It doesn't have to be that switch that I referenced before. We can reconsider a variety of different approaches. We could think about how we begin to evaluate the use of our flex days in short term. We can think about a phased-in plan for specific grade levels or certain schools in advance of others. And in doing so, we could think about these approaches as models where we can look at our implementation, we can measure our success, monitoring student and staff health through surveillance testing, and then continue to expand what that model looks like. It's important through this process, for me, that this year that we continue to maintain that 100% remote option for students and families that choose to do so. We know we have students that have health concerns that could be compromised by returning to those regular daily interactions or have immediate family members who could be at risk because of contracting COVID. And I want to be able to respect and continue to partner with those folks. So for the balance of the 2021 school year, I'm committed to making sure we have that option available to our students. And then what is important is that when we are thinking about this return to increase student attendance, that we do so with some science behind us. We want to take a look at what that positivity rate is in our schools, what the rate of contraction or spread may be in the community, and develop the metrics by which we're going to evaluate what is a safe standard to have in our schools. And here is where I'm going to leverage that cooperation and support that I referenced earlier from the Department of Health of Westchester County and our executive, George Latimer. We're going to ask them to collaborate with us, our outstanding medical director, Dr. Huff, in developing those metrics and to use those as our guide points to determine whether or not, yes, our schools are still safe to be open. The level of positive cases is reasonable for our community based upon what is going on today, what's happening, what those environmental factors are. You know, I've been taking a look at some data associated with other schools that have moved to three feet of social distancing. And when I look at some of them out on Long Island, some of them truly mirror what that positivity rate here is in Irvington in around 3% in our schools. You just have to go to the state dashboard and you can see this data. You can do the math yourself. Look at the number of cases that are present. Look at the enrollment in the school districts and do the math. We can identify that schools that have made that shift or that opened earlier on in the three-foot model, it is working for most of them. I'm going to tell you, there's a couple that some of their data may not line up directly, but we have to look to understand why that is so and what unique factors may be present. When we think about where we are, there may be components of the CDC guidance that works their way down. When we talk about those other warning levels that are out there of thinking about blue, yellow, orange, red zones, some of that may be integrated into the New York State guidance. And if it does, we have to contemplate what that means to us. But what I know here today, in conversations that I've been having with the PTSA Executive Board, our PTSA co-presidents, and thinking about this work over the recent weeks, is that I know that Irvington is ready for more. I know that our teachers want more. Our teachers want their children before them. Our teachers want the children back in school. They know they need it, and our teachers need it. They want to be with your children more frequently. I know that the number of active COVID cases in Westchester has nearly dropped by 50% in the past month. We're looking at numbers a month ago that were in the mid-11,000 number, and now we're down in the lower 6,000s. We're looking at this moving in the right direction. So Irvington needs to continue to move in this direction as well. So as a community, I ask for your patience. I ask for your support. And I give you my word, as I have throughout this entire process, that there's going to be a lot of communication, that there are going to be, I'm sure, some surveys that'll come from me in the coming week. I know that there's going to be additional forums, and there's going to be transparency around all of our decision-making. I'm going to be meeting with all of our faculty and staff to hear their feedback, their insights, their concerns. I'm going to provide those communications to the community. We're going to have additional updates along the way. I know that this is going to mean another board meeting, another public forum in the not-too-distant future, but it's important. And as I said, I've set target dates. It doesn't mean that we're waiting for those dates to arrive. But I want to be reasonable, and I want to set real expectations that can help inform your planning. I know that a change in student attendance can and will affect many people's lives. I have to think about how that affects everybody in our school community. So we set those target dates. But may we get there sooner? Absolutely. Might we find some challenges that bring some pause to the reality of those dates? Possibly. But let's trust the process, trust our committees that have parents, staff, Board of Ed members, teachers, that are coming together, Dr. Huff, our law enforcement, all different community partners, that are going to be coming together to wrestle with these challenges and to help me make the best decision for our school district and most importantly, make the best district for the well-being of the students in our care. So that said, Mr. Friedman, I think there's opportunity for discussion. I'm sure trustees have comments or questions. And as a reminder, as you said at the beginning of the meeting tonight, this is about process. Questions that are going to be presented, questions that may be asked, are going to be turned back to the committee. And the committee is going to contemplate them. That's going to inform that recommendation that I'll bring forth.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, and I'll turn over to the trustees for their questions. A minute, I'll leave mine to the end. But I did want to make one more comment. I did want to pick up on something that you referenced and also go back to our discussions over the summer when we were talking about our own plan here and that what we have to do in Irvington is what works in Irvington based on our size, our resources, our buildings. So every district is unique. Every district has their own advantages and limitations and what may be possible in one district may not be possible here. So I mean, I know community members are often always saying, well, this district's doing that, why can't we? And this district's doing that, why can't we? I know you spend a lot of time in discussions with your superintendent colleagues and others in the area, learning about what's going on in other districts. You know, I speak regularly with many board presidents about what's going on in their districts. So we certainly are aware of what goes on elsewhere. But you know, I just want to remind everyone that we have to look at what, you know, is possible in Irvington based on, you know, our own circumstances. So and that's always been, you know, how our decisions have been made. So I just did want to add that context around it. So I'll leave my questions for the end. So Dave, if you had any questions or other comments, you're up.
Just talking to your microphone.
Make sure the microphone's off, though. Turn it on. Yeah, just, yep, that on green.
Okay. Thank you very much. So first of all, I have some comments and one question that I'm sure I've echoed. So I'll pose it in one maybe way that will get answered in whole. But first, I wanted to take a moment to make a comment and just thank you and your team, everybody included. Just wanted to mention names for your effort and your consistent guidance during these difficult and surely are exhausting times. I wanted to thank you for reminding us that we have already been engaged with increasing student attendance for our most vulnerable students. Not that all our students are vulnerable at this time. I wanted to also, importantly, up and down the line here, thank all of my colleagues who have given up an enormous amount of their family, personal family time to drive this process forward over the course of the last year. I really appreciate working alongside each of you during this unprecedented time and just wanted to recognize your commitment and overall attention matters at hand, always, always, but in particular over the last year. So thank you. As a board member and as a parent with children in multiple schools, my wife and I have, and I'll speak a little bit as a parent, just to relate to the audience at large. My wife and I have had the same anxiousness that I see across many, many faces and families. All of us really have this anxiety, anxiety for the children, right? There is this notion of screen time versus physical movement, the idea of the anxiety about social, emotional damage being done. What are they really learning? And then, of course, we have our own adult anxiety, anxiety about juggling a dual-income household and kids scheduled at the same time, anxiety about returning to work safely. You know, listen, most of us families are in this together, and we certainly share a common goal, which is to get our kids back into school. I believe that we all have that commonality. And if we are really all in this truly together, then we all really need to understand what that means. And I think that was a real important point in this presentation. Again, thank you. And that means not spreading this and conflicting information, even if by accident, because there's a lot of it going around all over the place. Social media is a very powerful tool, as we can remember from the recent future, or recent past, excuse me. Choosing words, messages, what we share very carefully so that they are not interpreted as disparaging or damaging, because that doesn't move us any closer to our goal of getting our children back to school full-time, which is what our number one priority is, to get them back to school full-time and to do it safely. So I just wanted to make sure I got that out to everybody. So thanks again. The one big question that you addressed many of my questions, concerns, thoughts, and anxieties, the one I wanted you to go over with really quickly, because I think Ms. Littman kind of brought it up with her question earlier in regards to, you know, the idea of the science and vaccinations. And someone else also asked, what are the differences between us and other school districts? And Brian, you addressed that moments ago. But the one key thing is, can you talk to our footprint and how we can use it to flex into this increased attendance model, like our actual physical footprint? You know, how that surveying that will help us move forward as fast as we possibly can? And also just the idea of, I want to thank all of our teachers as well, for those who were vaccinated, who continue to get vaccinated. Because again, you know, I read an article just this morning, that teachers may play a central role in spreading COVID-19 in schools. And so to me, you know, as we read, I don't know if that one's true versus what, you know, Ms. Littman might have read earlier and the science she was referring to. But I know that it changes every five minutes, so getting people vaccinated is key. So thanks for everybody who's doing it. Now, if you could, if you could, the footprint would be great.
No. So when we think of the physical footprint of our school buildings, they introduce opportunities as well as constraints for all of us. So when we make contrast to some of our neighboring districts that may have expanded certain grades earlier in the year, some of them have enrollment that's dropped significantly over time, where they have open classrooms, where they have newer buildings that have much bigger classrooms that permit greater social distancing. You know, when we think about our schools, we have portions of Dow's Lane that are much older, where classrooms are smaller and tighter. And then we think about Main Street, for heaven's sake, it's an old 110-year-old building. Classrooms are tiny. So we have limitations as to what we can do in each building. We can't go and measure every tile and sit there and count every 12-inch tile. So we partnered with an architectural firm that provided us with some guidance early in this process to model for us what each and every classroom can hold from a student capacity standpoint with six feet of social distancing. We're now going through that same process with them to look at what we can do with three feet of social distancing. We've set up a model classroom in one of our schools to mimic what it looks like, taking the average square footage of one of the classrooms in that building to be able to model what this realistically would look like. And so we are making those adjustments in that planning right now. But to understand the constraints that we have, some of those classrooms are small. So we may not be able to have all of our children in that particular room at comfortable levels. We have to be mindful that we've grown accustomed to our students working at desks like this, where we could have two, three students at a table. We can't do that right now. So we have to make sure we have the space to spread out. When I think about some of our neighboring districts that had the space to spread out, in doing so, you had to acquire the staffing. I know some districts had hired 15, 20 new teachers to be able to come in and supplement those efforts. That's at a price tag of like $2 million that a district like Irvington certainly doesn't have. So we didn't have the square footage. We didn't have the staffing. We didn't have the funds to be able to secure that level of staffing. So rather than focus on where we've been, let's focus on the opportunity before us and work with our committee to recognize what that path forward is to increase daily student attendance in a safe way while keeping the health and safety of our staff and students at the top priority.
Thank you very much. And my other question is maybe more, maybe more complex, maybe not, I don't know. But speaking to this idea, I've read that CDC guidelines from February 12th now, that all 35 to 38 pages of it, about three, four times. And I've read the Department of Health guidelines. I've never seen the number three feet anywhere. I just, can we, like you mentioned in the presentation, can we zoom in on that particular piece, which I know is the hot topic, is just sort of this notion of six feet versus three feet? I know there's language that talks about using, not necessarily partitions, but what's the word that it's called?
Barriers.
Barriers. Then I see, for example, in reception area, and that's different than a classroom, right? Because like, if I think about the reception area when I walk in here, that has the plastic barrier on it, it's much different than a classroom, right? Like, so can we just like help?
Yeah.
Again, like simplify that concept.
Yeah. So I would say it's not an arbitrary figure. That number of six feet, we've seen grow out of multiple tiers of guidance around the area. But I can tell you that there's multiple studies that are out there and studies that are informed by research all over the globe that looks at the impacts of social distancing. And in doing so, it really shows that there isn't a significant difference between the level of spread or positivity rates with the difference in three versus six feet. What these studies focus on, and I'm actually trying to look for the tab here that I have of my own resources that references some of these studies. But really, where the key is behind all this is the face coverings, making sure that we have strictly enforced mask-wearing practices and policies and that we enforce hand-washing hygiene, have hand sanitizer in classrooms, make sure students are washing their hands on a regular basis. But when we think about where we are, and that three feet really started as conversation earlier in the process, coming from a position paper that was written by the American Academy of Pediatrics, which led and spurred to many other studies across the country that have really focused on this. So when we think about it, there's all kinds of research that's out there. There is something from Academy, American Academy of Pediatrics. There's Global Health Resource that's published it. There are 172 studies that, from 16 different countries, that look at the practices that have been implemented in schools and all the different mitigation measures that have been put in place, including face masks. And they surmise that three feet of physical distancing should suffice so as long as we continue to enforce social distancing, mask-wearing, hand-washing, and we monitor the health within our schools.
Beth?
Hello. Okay. Just had to check my mic. First, I'd like to piggyback on all the thanks and gratitude that my colleague, Dave Graber, has issued. I won't waste time repeating all of that. And I'd like to move on to some questions. The first question has to do with reconvening the re-steering committee. No, it's not the reopening committee, the steering committee.
I almost want to take that word reopening away.
And move it to increasing, increasing in-person student attendance. Absolutely. That is much more applicable to Irvington than it is to other places in the United States and even some places in New York. So it seems to me that there were four. So, it seems to me that there were four aspects. You had a steering committee, you had an SEL committee, you had a curriculum committee, I don't have the slides in front of me, and you had like an operations committee. But it also seems to me that the SEL curriculum and operations committees, in the nature of just running an educational organization such as the Irvington Union Free School District, have been doing their work throughout the time since July, August, September, when we actually moved to reopening from the closures of the spring of 2020. So, I guess it's a comment. It seems that there's a real hunger for streamlining, but it's not a streamlining at the risk of losing safety or responsibility to our staff, our teachers, our students, our community, but that because of the hard work that you've been doing all year, you know, since the beginning of this, that there's an opportunity to really keep that process swift and efficient. And I think I'm hearing that, that that seems to be the case.
And Beth, I would, just if I may clarify, I do agree the opportunity is there, but I want to make sure that I have the opportunity to engage my faculty and staff.
Absolutely.
And that their feedback, their thinking is a part of all these decisions that we're making. We have the best faculty and staff there is in the state of New York, and I'm not going to overstep their feedback and their expertise, because we need that to make sure we have the best paneling possible for our kids.
And that's why we've been having a good hybrid experience, also because there's been feedback and support from our teachers, who I know that all the parents who are advocating believe in and support. So, the other piece I'd like to get a sense of is, I know that Dr. Huff is our medical director. Do you feel that you will actually have input either from Commissioner Amler or Assistant Commissioner, I think her name is Wang?
Mm-hmm.
Or they're designees before March 23rd?
Absolutely.
That's really good to hear.
Absolutely. Well, I can tell you, and I don't want to speak for Dr. Huff, and at some point, if the board desires, I believe she's in the audience, we could invite her to join us as well, that we've already been in conversation about some of our initial thinking around what this can look like, her expertise in looking at different models that are out there right now, and we would want to collaborate with the Department of Health mainly to be able to access the other sets of data that are out there and for them to validate our thinking about the metrics that we want to utilize. So, we need the county to be able to provide us with the public data sets that are out there. So, we know that it's commonly reported that they, across New York State, that they report on a county level. We're going to want school district-level data to be able to measure, because we want to see what's happening in our neighborhoods, in our homes, in contrast to what's happening in our schools.
And that would be very helpful, I believe, and I wanted to ask you a little bit about this, because we got the governor's proclamation today, which I thought you might want to touch upon, and I think you've been reticent about the great job that you and the county executive have done in that vaccination plan that took place on President's Day, that that is a big move forward to getting to where we want to go, and I don't think I've seen coverage. Yonkers did it with 550 staff and teachers, and I think White Plains also was a district, and the percentage of teachers and staff was much, was very admirably high. So, I want to just allow you to blow your own horn on that.
About a third of our staff participated, and we're pleased with that, and I will speak to the executive order in a second, but the one thing that we don't want to overlook is that we have to be mindful that after the second dose, a lot of folks have, have, you know, symptoms that are COVID-like, that are, can exclude them from work while they are, you know, ruled out that it's not COVID. So, really, this is a double-edged sword. It's wonderful, it's a beautiful thing that we've had this opportunity to get so many people vaccinated, and so many people vaccinated in the short window of time, but we also run that risk of a whole bunch of people not feeling well the day after they get, they get their second dose. So, we have to be prepared for that, and we're trying to make plans for what that looks like. So, it's a beautiful thing, we're moving forward, it's great for the health of our, our staff members and, of course, our students, but we have to work through that one little hiccup that could come our way in a few weeks. Today, Governor issued an executive order, an executive order that requires teachers, it doesn't talk about all school employees, specifically states teachers must report their vaccination status to their school district or schools, it applies to both public and private schools. It goes in effect tomorrow, and school districts have to begin to collect and report that data on a weekly basis on Fridays. We have yet to see what this reporting portal is going to look like, but, so we'll establish a baseline with our, with our teachers. So, teacher, to me, it's a little nearsighted, because there's a lot more people that you need to keep a school running than just our teachers, it should be everybody if they're going to do this.
Yes.
But we'll have set a baseline with our teachers for this week, and then every week following that, we have the obligation to report all of the additional staff members that have been vaccinated.
Maintaining confidentiality is necessary.
Of course, it's confidential, and it's just going to be reporting numbers, and it's going to also be reported as a percentage of teachers that are working physically onsite.
Which, which is also similar to the other COVID dashboard, which you guys have, you know, complied with since, I guess, about October, when they asked us to do that out of the blue.
Yeah, and I give my accolades to the nurses and Ms. Stein, because they manage that for us on a daily basis.
Absolutely. So, a few, like, really granular questions now, instead of the bigger questions. I wanted to ask if, you know, there will be some, I've been looking at, I guess it was page 12 of the presentation, I think that has the list of many of the things that the steering committee will be looking at. So, one thing I think is covered there, do you agree that there may be discussion of changes in best practicing and masking from what we've talked about? Like, there's been talk about double masking or certain levels, and that that might be something that is taken into account.
Yeah, and that would be a conversation that we could have certainly within those subcommittees and rely on the guidance of Dr. Huff, and we can certainly connect with the Department of Health for any additional guidance, that there can be opportunities for education and promotion of that. And as always, we have a significant supply of PPE to be able to support those initiatives in our school.
And do you think that it's possible that the committee would consider whether face shields for older students perhaps, perhaps for younger, could be an appropriate substitute for a polycarbonate barrier?
It can be a consideration, for sure. I understand them to be not necessarily comfortable and not the choice headwear for everybody, but I'm not going to rule anything out. Like we said, this is an authentic process where we're going to explore these different options.
And I just was wondering, have you heard at all in the community that certain districts are thinking about, perhaps you'd have a greater distance between teachers and staff and students versus students versus, and students?
So, if you actually go back to some of the original New York State Department of Health guidance, that there is recommendation about having a, what's referred to as a teacher's zone, where that you would have a greater space between the teacher and students than between or among students. So, that where you may have three feet between students, that you may have a space in the front of the classroom for the teacher to move about, that may have six feet of space between the teacher and the students. So, that, scenarios and models like that with actual illustrations that actually we'll be looking at tomorrow with the reopening committee, that actually provide some scenarios where that would play out.
Well, that's great. So, good news on vaccinations, good news that you shared with us on the binax now and on the lab certification. That's the surveillance test. Seems like there's lots to be, and I think it's great that you clarified that these were end dates, not implementation dates, because I knew there was a lot of chatter about that. And before I give my time over to Mr. Hannah, I just want to just give him a second, please. Nope, I think I covered everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Michael?
Yes, no, you've asked some great questions and made some great statements, so covered some of my questions, so thank you. And thank you to everyone who's working with you, Dr. Harrison. We know how challenging it is and how taxing it is, so we appreciate the work. You know, I think, just to reiterate, everyone is aiming for the same goal of ultimately getting our students back in class. We read everywhere that school spread is lower, and we know that that's because there's mitigation, and that does not exist in the same way outside of schools. So, I think you expressed clearly the number of steps and the types of steps we have to take to, to transition, so that the protocols that come after or evolve are very clear for all of us to follow, and I think the district has done a great job on that front. And I'll just echo, I think, when we circle back to look at recommendations, that, that question of the metrics around how we assess spread is really important, because I think along with, you know, the mitigation efforts and the, in terms of distancing or masks or whatever else, and, and the vaccinations, is that question of how do we assess spread and make decisions based on that for being in class? So, that's already been discussed, I won't ask a question related to it. And you addressed my, some of my questions related to the new portal related to, to vaccination reporting. So, the one question I'll ask is just around, when we had our extensive discussion that was, the governor handed to us about high-risk sports, all of us agreed we wanted to have this discussion, and I'm glad we're having it. And I guess there's, I want to make sure that it gets outside of this room to our buildings and to anyone who's doing planning, that we are on this path and that, as we look to spring activities in April, May, and June, that we're not closing off opportunities when we think we're actually heading the other direction to try and create more opportunity for in-person activities. So, you know, we have the steering committee that's looking at a lot of the big-picture items, but there are a lot of other folks meeting for whatever activity they're associated with, and I hope that we are, maybe find a way to, to share information along the way or to be very clear with recommendations by March, so that they know that, to the degree that they have to keep several options open, that they'll, they'll have some guidance by that time to help them also plan to have any range of activities available to be more welcoming in person, like we've done with high-risk sports and how we, like, we hope to do with in-class learning.
Yeah, and, and so, Mr. Hannah, thank you for the comments, and to your point, I think that the movement and the expansion of daily student attendance and the restoration of a sense of normalcy is going to, we talk about some positive spread, is going to spread through the community, and it's going to present opportunity for other organizations in our community to be able to expand their programming and services to families and children. So, whether it's Department of Recreation, JCC, other club-level activities, we're going to be able to open our schools slowly to other groups that need space to run programs as well. So, you know, we look at schools as the center of a community, and the work that we're doing on this front is going to have really a ripple effect that's going to go throughout Irvington school community, but heck, it's going to impact other communities around us. We're going to see other school districts that aren't having this conversation yet starting to have the conversation, we're going to see their programs expand and grow as well for their kids. So, we're all on the right track here, we just got to be smart about how we're doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Maura?
Thank you. So, I came into this meeting hoping, hoping to hear about kind of the pillars that would support school reopening, including the testing, sorry, the, so the implementation of surveillance testing in the school district and the growth of that, of that program, as well as, as well as when we would expect to see the majority of teachers vaccinated. And both of those things are here in the presentation, so I am, I'm grateful, and I think they are, that your emphasis on doing this safely and that the emphasis of everyone involved in, in the reopening process on doing this in a way that is responsible is greatly appreciated, at the same time that I know that the urgency that the families feel who are, who are listening to this and indeed that are sitting in this room. So, with that, I also wanted to, wanted to say that I truly appreciated your emphasis on the fact that the end of April is not necessarily the start of the phase-in, but certainly things will be started by then, and I wanted to express my support, since that's about all I can do at this point, or, you know, reconsidering in the meantime the ability to use the Flex Wednesdays, which does not actually, seems like something that can be done in the meantime, assuming that, you know, that we have the staff and so on, there, there are things I hope that would, we are considering happening in the interim and that wouldn't require, you know, a full implementation of the plan to get started with. I'd also, and, you know, this doesn't, this doesn't benefit my family, but if a specific, you know, as, as you say, if specific grade levels can be phased in ahead of others and that provides some kind of learning or any kind of ability to get things started, I absolutely would support those sorts of steps as opposed to transitioning everyone directly to 100% at one time. So, you know, I understand that these things are going to be considered in, in committee, but a lot of times what we do here, you know, in, in our position as board members is to express our support for one, one direction or the other, so I thought that I would, I would do that now. I don't think that I have any, any questions that haven't been addressed. I'm also, I'm also incredibly glad to hear, although we haven't always been, I know that sometimes the state requirements for information have made your life more difficult in this pandemic period. It certainly seems like teacher vaccinations are one of the key metrics that we need to be looking at as we go through this process of reopening, so I am incredibly grateful for that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback and support. Thank you. Jane? I'm just going around, I'm just going around the room.
I just want to thank Dr. Harrison for providing the opportunity for any teacher who wanted to, to get vaccinated. Was that just teachers or other staff members that work closely with children?
It was any staff member in the school district, so anyone that would have fallen into that 1B priority category, and yeah, there was work done on, on our part and advocacy on my part, but the thanks goes to the county for being able to facilitate the clinic for them.
Well, that is a really big first step in consideration, and I know my fellow trustee, Mr. Graber, was asking about the three-foot, six-foot rule, and Mr. Propper, you had sent us an article that I'm referencing, that the D, the Department of Health first came out and said on, I think it was July 13th, that it would be okay for three to six feet, and then they issued another memo saying that it should be six feet. So, I think that's where the confusion of the three to six feet thing is coming, and I wanted to know, do you know of any schools in Westchester that have gone to the three feet?
So, as I think was of our facility, there's a number of districts that are on that path there. So, the two that have garnered the most attention, Rye and Harrison, are on that path and moving in that direction, and I don't necessarily want to say three feet, because if we have a space that, that can accommodate all of the class and we can have six feet of space, we're going to do it.
Of course.
But what we're saying is less than six feet, but we're certainly not going to be butting students' desks together. But when we look at other districts, as was referenced by Mrs. Littman earlier, there's districts that are moving in that direction, but they're doing so in a variety of different ways, most closely aligned to the approach that we're taking, that a systemic movement is looking at like Harrison and Rye at this point in time, and, but there's, you know, many others that are on, on this journey as well, of course.
Oh, I just want, I don't have any other questions, I just wanted to thank you for all the hard work and the thoughtful and deliberate work you've done on, on getting the students back in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron? You turn your mic on, on top, right here. Yep, push.
I'm new to this. I also want to say thank you for all the hard work. I know a lot is going into putting all this, all the committees back together, researching all the data, and to try to get our kids back in school, which, as everyone has said, is the goal for everyone. I think we all want our kids back in school full-time, we obviously want it done safely. I think- I think when we started on this journey last March, none of us could have anticipated that remote learning would have lasted a year. Right? I mean, I think I remember thinking, we'll be back to work in June. Little did I know that that was way off. So as time has gone on, and obviously the vaccines that everyone has talked about, it's sort of a game changer for what we're able to do. And I think that's really what's helping us propel the conversation forward. And with that in mind, when we started on this journey, it was all about keeping our teachers and our student community as safe as possible and as healthy as possible physically. I don't think we could have envisioned the mental toll and the social emotional anxiety that it's placed on our children. And being a year later, I think that's becoming more of, I don't want to say an issue, but definitely is percolating more to the top where families are looking at, I mean, we need getting kids back in school to help with their development, not just academically, but also socially and emotionally. And maybe are willing to take a little bit more of a risk physically, knowing that. With that being said, we certainly don't want our teachers to take any more of a risk. So we've got their, they have the opportunity to be vaccinated. I think that's a big part of it. With that also being said, I, a lot of people have mentioned about the data, and I know we don't have to adhere to the CDC guidelines. I think it's helpful to understand sort of where we are as a community and if we're going to benchmark against Irvington versus Westchester County and what that would look like. In my own calculations, I sort of think if we benchmarked against Westchester County right now, we'd actually be, they have four zones, a blue, a yellow, an orange, and a red. We'd be at the high end of the yellow, just based on the number of new cases, not the percentage. And they have these two metrics primarily because a percentage can be lower based on the number of people getting tested. We all know a lot more people are getting tested because there's a lot more surveillance testing. So just important to know that if you did look at the CDC guidelines, we'd be at the high end of a yellow, which has some guidelines for opening schools versus orange, which talks more to a hybrid model. So I just think it's important for the reopening committees just to understand the risk of the community spread as we embark on potentially four or five days, three days, four or five days of attendance. That impact could be, we've been fortunate, we haven't really recently had to shut down. And we, I think we need to just think about what that looks like and if we, if and when we go to expanded student attendance. That's my data comment. And what else did I just want to? And I think the other thing is, we opened, obviously we put all these mitigation factors into play. Six feet, which was the buzzword, six feet, six feet, six feet. Ironically enough, the August 2020 data from guidance from the Department of Health actually speaks to six feet or less if you have barriers in place with an administrative room for Westchester interpreted as six feet and all the be-all. So I think the other thing that it just highlights is we can find articles that say a myriad of things. And we're going to look to do, I think, what's safest for all of our kids, balancing the social emotional with the physical risk and obviously keeping our teachers and our staff safe. So it's, it's not easy. I've often said, I think we're just, no matter what decision we make, it's not going to be perfect until the virus goes away and we know everyone can go to school safely. So I appreciate all the hard work and whatever evidence we're going to give to the reopening committee to help them to make their decision.
Great. Thank you, Erin. And I think you said a lot of things that, that are worth highlighting. And if we reflect back to where we were a year ago, we were thinking that initially folks were thinking that this is going to return to normalcy in how many months? Then we found ourselves at the beginning of the school year that there was a lot of conversation about how long are we possibly going to be able to keep schools open? There was doubt we were going to be able to keep schools open. So I want to use that to kind of ground some of the anxiety and the angst we have about that rush to bring kids back now. Is that, let's look where we are because in September, in August, we were thinking we weren't going to be able to stay open that long. You know, there's questions out there, and I know I've seen some emails and I've heard some feedback from parents that have asked, you know, well, who says you have to have teachers vaccinated to come back? CDC did, and they're not doing it in England, they're not doing it in other places. No one is saying that we have to do it. It is a safeguard that is a priority for me as your superintendent and I believe for our Board of Education. Who is saying that we have to have surveillance testing? Nobody is. But you know what? It's a responsible effort for us to undertake to monitor the health and safety of our students. And by the way, it'll provide good data for the surrounding community so you have a better handle on what's happening in your own town. And then another question is with respect to the barriers. Well, you could bring people back without barriers. Certainly you could do that. But if we have the opportunity to do it and add another layer of safety, we're going to do it. So those are all measures that we want to implement as we look to move forward. But, so thank you for the good feedback.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. I also want to add that, I mean, the CDC in its own guidance looks at if you have surveillance testing in place in a school, they treat it differently than if you don't. So it's one of, also their tenants in terms of how they're looking at the metrics. So, no, I thank the trustees for all of their questions and discussions. I think they've hit on all the topics. I don't want to make the meeting go longer than necessary and look forward to the continuation of this process, to the forthcoming recommendations and the future discussion that we'll have together in this room about the next steps and where we're going to go as a district. So, thank you. So with that, we will move on to tonight's consent agenda.
And if I may request that we make a modification to item 9.4 and to add our Director of Technology, Jason Stromwasser, as another individual that has completed his lead evaluator training. He was inadvertently left off of this list.
Sure. So with now that modification to 9.4, are there any questions on tonight's consent agenda? Yeah, we'll both speak to that as we always do afterwards. But seeing no questions, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? All in favor? Aye. So, Dr. Harrison, I'll turn it over to you for your usual discussion of the pertinent items.
Absolutely. So item 9.2 is certainly significant and worth noting. As I sent out an communication to the community yesterday, our outstanding Assistant Principal at Dow's Lane, Liza Wishney, is going to be working from home for a period of time. And knowing that our students and staff need additional support and Dr. Kanter needs a partner to be able to work with her in the building, we're actually very excited to invite Dr. Scott Mosenthal back to serve as a executive assistant or acting administrator for the balance of this school year at Dow's Lane. For those of you in the community that don't know Dr. Mo, Dr. Mosenthal had an impressive 38-year career in the Irvington School District that, where he was a teacher, a department chairperson, and the principal of the high school for many years. In fact, this very space, the campus library, is named in Dr. Mosenthal's honor. So we're certainly pleased to welcome Scott back and welcome his experience and partnership. And I know folks at Dow's were very excited to see him walking the halls and lending his expertise and care as he was known for, for all those years. So we certainly want to recognize him. We have a couple of staff resignations that are noteworthy. One, Lisa Torsha, who was in a clerical assistant in our technology and athletics office, has moved on to another position. Lisa has served us well for a number of years, and I thank Lisa for her service to the school district. Also, Joanna Steffi, formerly known as Joanna Morabito, has resigned and opting to stay home, spend more time with her family. So Joanna has been an incredible resource to our science department at the high school, being a great teacher, a passionate leader of the department as the chair for a period of time. So we thank Joanna for, for all of her work and wish her and her family well as we look to, as they look to move forward. And then finally, I believe there's one other thing that is really noteworthy, and I draw the board's attention, two more things, but most notably to draw attention to item 10.1. Unfortunately, going back to the end of last year, we lost one of our beloved school community members, Claudia Rodriguez, who was an amazing individual, an inspiration for those of us in the school district and was an incredible advocate for our children as a school counselor here at Irvington High School. Unfortunately, short after, shortly after her retirement, Claudia passed away, and she was a great, it's just a great loss. But in her honor, I am really proud of my colleagues in this amazing school district that have come forward and have proposed a scholarship for our graduating seniors in Claudia's name. And with the board's consent tonight, we will proudly award a Claudia Rodriguez scholarship each year to graduates of Irvington High School. So thank you to my colleagues, to Claudia's memory and her impact on this community that will be forever felt. And then finally, the last item, 10.2, would be the resolution as an extension of the discussion we had at the last meeting that would be authorizing wrestling for a community comment. It's noteworthy that we've developed and put in place specific precautions for our student athletes that will be participating in wrestling. As we are kicking off surveillance testing in our athletics program this week, our wrestlers are going to be tested on a weekly basis as well. So there's added layers of precaution, but it's worth making that announcement based upon the conversation that we had at the last meeting. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, for those additional updates. And now we move on to our second community comment period. So if there's people in the community who wish to comment, now's the time to put your name and address in the Q and A feature in Zoom, and you'll be recognized. Again, please try to keep your comments to less than three minutes. With that, we have Frances O'Shea, 8 Maple Street in Irvington.
Yes, she's there? Frances O'Shea, you've been promoted. If you could unmute yourself, you're able to speak now? Yeah. Just to account that. All right. Jay, could we, you want to move on to somebody else?
Yeah, we'll move on to, excuse me, Tracy Portnoy, 77 Roundy Bend Road in Tarrytown. Ms. Portnoy, if you'd like to make a comment, you'll be recognized.
Hi. Actually, some of my questions were very clearly answered, but just for my own knowledge and understanding, a lot of the feedback I'm hearing from parents is, you know, what other school districts are doing. So the school districts that are planning on changing to kind of this three-foot social distance modeling, are they able to roll out their surveillance testing before coming back this month? Also, were they able to have their teachers further along with vaccinations? And thirdly, did they, are they generally employing partitions? Did that come, did I come through okay?
I didn't understand if there was a question.
Yeah, I think
I just want to know of those, the schools that you're referencing that are like Rye and Harrison, are they going back with surveillance testing already in place this month and partitions?
Dr. Harrison, I think, I think the question was districts like Harrison that are starting to look at bringing students back, do they have surveillance testing in place? I believe that was the question.
Yeah. I can't speak to what's happening in every district. I know it's a consideration in some places, but I know it's a resource that we are going to employ here in our schools or that I'm recommending that we employ here in our schools. But I know it's a consideration in different places, and I know other schools have begun doing it already.
And also partitions. I don't know if you can hear me better.
Yeah.
If you have any idea if that's really a widely used practice. I'm just imagining my sixth grader carrying around his 30-pound backpack in addition to possibly a portable partition, or my first grader touching partitions and knowing that the janitors have even more things to disinfect.
Yeah. That, some places are, some places are not doing it. That's again inconsistent from place to place. So I believe like when you look at Chappaqua, for example, Chappaqua is, but I don't believe our partners in Harrison are. So those are local decisions. Some are basing it upon availability. And, you know, if you look at a school district that has 4,000 students and purchasing 4,000 units versus Irvington purchasing 1,700 units, there's a very different budgetary point, especially when we look at districts such as Harrison that have spent millions of dollars on air purification systems, for example. So some districts have taken measures that haven't even been proposed or considered or practically wouldn't be viable here in Irvington.
Thank you.
Would Jay was able to find Frances O'Shea? If you want to do that again?
So I think we've found Mr. O'Shea. So if you're able to go ahead and ask your question or make your comment, now's the time.
Thank you. I thank everyone for your continued work. I know there's a lot of thanks out there. Being said tonight, there's also a lot of frustration, and I wanted to simply speak for myself and parents of children at Dow's Lane, specifically kindergarten and first graders. The last year, the last few months have been extremely stressful for us, given the age of our children. I know that every school age has its special needs and focus. I know that all the parents here care about their children and are experiencing difficulties, but I would simply like to say and stress to you all here, and I believe none of you have really, really young kids, that it is extraordinarily stressful on our families to have our children here the majority of the time. I think you guys have done an admirable job of staying within the rules and doing what we can to get our kids back, but it's simply not enough for us. I would like you to focus immediately and as quickly as possible on getting our kids, our youngest kids at Dow's back in at a minimum on Wednesdays, and to look as soon as possible at getting them back, given their relatively low risk factors, as soon as possible. The deadlines that Dr. Harrison laid out seem unnecessarily distant from now. I understand from all that you've said that there's a lot of planning to be done. My opinion, much of this could have already been done and likely has been. But please understand that at least for us, I'm asking for something special from you and different from the other kids and the parents of other kids. We need our kids back in school as soon as possible, even if that means giving us a different set of, you know, a different treatment than the other children in our district who I know also have, you know, I care about them too. But we need to get these little kids back in school now or as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Lowenbrowne. 16 Richmond Hill. So Jay, if you could promote Ms. Lowenbrowne, please.
I believe Ms. Lowenbrowne is been promoted. If you can unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Harrison. I appreciate the process and the complexity. I'd like to also advocate for action on the small steps that can be taken immediately, starting with every other Wednesday, or I'm sorry, with every Wednesday. starting with every other Wednesday, or sorry, with every Wednesday. This is easily implemented. It's been on the table for months. I think many of us would appreciate action on this while the rest of the process unfolds as early as next week or the week after. And I also appreciate that it's impossible to predict the future, but I'd also encourage you all to plan for scenarios that are possible or likely. So these subcommittee meetings and discussions can be complete by the time we're ready to press play and when the scenarios play out. I think some of the frustration is around the wording around thinking and planning. And, you know, certainly I think we understand that, but at the same time, I think we're looking for action and specifics. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Larissa Searchin, 29 Alta Vista Circle in Irvington.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thanks so much. So I would also like to advocate for a couple of more immediate actions. And also, you know, I do think at some point we need to think about the benefit-risk profile of delaying openings so that we can get every step perfect relative to, you know, getting to 85% there and having our kids, you know, back in school, particularly the younger ones. I want to add on to what a couple others said about the young ones. I have a, you know, six-year-old who's in first grade. She's only had, I think, three or four months of traditional school back in fall of kindergarten. You know, like her friends are from preschool because we don't have friends anymore because we can't socialize in school anymore. And I've had to, she hates school. She's, she has temper tantrums regularly now when we're doing, trying to get her to do homeschool. It's, it's just, it's not, but she's a different child when she's actually there with the teacher. So I've even had, I've had to have discussions with the assistant principal. It's been really challenging. I have a full-time nanny working with her because I work and my husband works and she can't do this on her own. So I just want to add those additional points about the young children. They really, they really need that time for so many reasons. I just feel like they're missing out on not just the academics, obviously, but the social emotional development and the part about learning to understand and appreciate and love school when you're young and when it's, you know, fun before it gets really hard. The other piece I would like to stress as well is the Wednesdays. I mean, I can say, and I don't know if this is every parent's, but I've definitely spoken to a lot of parents. I mean, I have a fourth grader as well and a sixth grader. I mean, they're, they're pretty much done at noon and then they spend the rest of the day on their iPads, which I'm embarrassed to say, but I know I'm not the only one who has this issue. But I can't do things to get them, I mean, I'm working. And it's horrible and it drives me crazy, but I would love to be able to have them, you know, actually doing school during that time, which, which would be during a traditional year. And, and I'm concerned too, like I feel like they're missing a lot of hours during a traditional year and how are we going to be making up for that, those deficits? Are there deficits? I'm not really sure. I'm sure there are, but so in any event, I think those are two of the things that are most pressing on my mind. I do understand that this group has been working really, really hard. I guess I wish or was hoping that some of this contingency planning for opening more full-time may have gotten started earlier on. I think also, you know, when, when there's lots of different committees and lots of different opinions, it's hard to kind of get pen on paper and make decisions. And I guess I'm also just volunteering and I'm sure many other parents would too. If you need more help to get this done so we can move more quickly and urgently, please put a call out because I think a lot of us feel a significant sense of urgency around getting the kids back in school and we'd be happy to help out to make that possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Laura Coronado, 118 East Sunnyside Lane in Irvington.
Hello?
No, go ahead, please.
Yes. Hi, I'd like to thank everyone for all you've done this far to keep our children safe in school. And I would like to comment my support in bringing our youngest learners back as soon as we can, starting with Dow's and moving on from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have. Sorry. Christina Cavi DeCarlo, 52 Sunnyside Place.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you so much, everyone, for taking this, this time and allowing for us parents to voice our concerns. I have, I have a question and then also comments. I'm so glad to hear that Dr. Harrison is prioritizing conversations with teachers and staff as part of the planning. What are some of the specific concerns that you've heard from the staff? I think it'll help us as a parent community practice empathy for these folks who we care for deeply and, and respect as well, of course. That, so that's my question. Moving forward, just to my, my personal experiences, I'm a mother of twin first graders. My daughters really enjoy school. They come home four mornings a week, very excited, telling me everything that they learned and what's going on at school and the schedule for tomorrow. However, on Wednesdays, I know that the girls are in for a long morning of remote learning. My daughters have the typical attention span for first graders. They've been in school since they were two years old and they've never struggled with attending to activities in school. They continue not to have any difficulties attending, attending in school, except on Wednesdays. School starts at 8:00 AM by 9:30 on the typical Wednesday morning, if not earlier. My daughters are asking how much longer? And they ask at least every 20 minutes for the rest of the morning. It pains me to tell them that they have another two hours of remote learning at six and a half years old. It's the end of February and Wednesdays are not any easier. I'm asking you to please think creatively and let our youngest learners go to school onsite on Wednesdays as soon as possible. To take it a step further, I'd like to see more of a push to get all the youngest learners going to school full-time in person, just as many other school districts have been able to manage for months and others are implementing in the coming weeks. Lengthy hours on the computer and the time at home when they're supposed to be at school is not the appropriate, much less the ideal way for them to be, for them to learn. While I don't believe this type of learning is optimal for students of any age, I'm reminded daily how it is completely inefficient for first graders who are not yet independent learners. Young children are very dependent on our professional teachers to learn critical skills rather than their inexperienced parents as teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if Dr. Harrison or somebody could, could go comment on my question. Thank you.
To speak to the concerns that are present, I'm certainly not going to represent the thinking of every single staff member that's out there, but certainly it's concerns in and around health and safety precautions and all the operational protocols that would have to be adapted within school buildings to ensure that they can provide a safe experience for their students. When we think about how do we facilitate mass breaks? How do we eat lunch in spaces where we can accommodate all the children like we used to? There's layers of health and safety protocols that would be, I believe, the teacher's top priority to have addressed. And, and then I believe we'd be in a position, we'd be having lots of positive conversation about those priorities that we're hearing from so many of our, our community members this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Marissa Lefler, 15 Caugill Lane in Irvington.
Hi, thank you so much. I just really want to underscore what many have, before me have said, but I really think that, you know, the timelines that were conveyed while certainly appreciate that they're not necessarily what will be adhered to, don't really seem to really portray the sense of urgency that many of us really feel about getting our kids back into school as soon as possible. Secondly, want to really reiterate the point around not needing to have a consistent approach across all the schools and particularly focusing on Dow's Lane and getting our youngest learners back in school as soon as possible, five days a week ideally. And then finally, just wanted to, again, sort of reiterate, understanding that there's a lot of considerations and planning that needs to go into this. I think that, you know, as many have raised before, there are lots of uncertainties that we all still face and at some point we need to just implement and understand what is working, what is not working and make changes accordingly. But I just don't think that we're going to ever have in front of us every single, every single understanding of what the challenges are and how those can be addressed. So just a few points to underscore from my fellow parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Anu Malapati, 12 East Clinton Avenue in Irvington.
Hi, thank you for everything you're doing. I joined a little bit late, so I'm sure this question has already been answered many times before, but I still don't really understand the answer. I have a son in kindergarten and like others, I'm wondering why he can't be in school in person on Wednesdays in terms of safety and logistics. I don't really understand the difference between going in person on Wednesday and why that would be different than going in person on a Tuesday, for example, after the Monday. So as others have also said, I would support seeing that change for sure and don't really understand completely why that is the case currently.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say if you want to email me, I think I could actually send you a link to the video where we discussed the rationale and the benefits to the Wednesday. But the purpose of this process is that we're reevaluating the entire attendance model and looking to first, to implement some change. So that, that being said, Wednesday is something that is likely going to have some shifts in our future. But if you want to email me, I'll send you some specific information related to the Wednesdays from prior meetings that would help you understand the value that it's had to our operations and our students' learning at this time.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nancy Silverman, 13 Janet Terrace.
Do you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, great. Like many other kids, my eighth grader has been struggling with virtual learning. I know we've been discussing the younger kids a lot tonight, but I think we also need to consider the middle and high school students as well. The lack of in-school, in-person school has made structure and consistency almost impossible. With appropriate school-based support mechanisms, he was an honor roll student in advanced classes, but this year's his grades plummeted because he's not in school. He clearly must return for more than two days per week and there has to be a logical and safe way to accomplish this much-needed goal, certainly much earlier than April 30th. The arrangement would afford him and other kids like him more consistency, more supervision, would provide a better platform for him to succeed academically. I honestly believe that a predictable schedule in school with fewer distractions would be a game changer for my son and for other kids with special needs and learning differences. Of course, all students are struggling with remote learning. How could they not? But for, for students with special needs and learning differences, online learning has proven to be virtually impossible. At school, they often rely on personal hands-on attention from teachers, but at home, all of those reports fall out the window. Every study that I've seen reports that our kids show sign of frustration, lack of focus, a decrease in motivation. They're burnt out and frankly, so am I. During the last few months, many local schools have loosened their restrictions for in-person learning, particularly for the most vulnerable, vulnerable students, and we need to follow suit quickly. Opening Main Street School to kids in ICT classes was certainly an important start, but we also have to consider the middle school and the high school kids. I understand that the administration's intent is to reopen the school safely for everyone. However, children with special needs have unique challenges that have to be addressed. A one-size-fits-all policy isn't appropriate since it is difficult or impossible for some kids to learn from home. As you plan to reopen the schools, I ask the board, the administration, all of the reopening committees and frankly, all decision makers to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephanie Fonseca, 25 Eiler Lane.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for all that you continue to do for our district. I also wanted to thank our teachers who have put so much time, energy and creativity into teaching in this hybrid model. They are truly incredible. As previous commentators have stated, I would like to urge you to please consider adding alternating Wednesdays to the hybrid model as soon as possible. I urge you to consider the social and emotional well-being of our youngest students, specifically grades K and 1, who do not have lunch or recess or clubs or sports and increase their attendance to 100%. We have seen this model implemented throughout Westchester District successfully without any increased risk than what we experienced in the four-day ANPM model. Furthermore, it would be helpful to see a phased-in approach to increased in-person learning across grades 2 through 12. And just to empathize with the previous commentator, children with special needs should be in as soon as possible. At least that is my belief. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Brunavas, 157 Field Point Drive in Irvington.
Hi, good evening. I won't waste your time by thanking you all. I, Brian, I have a quick question. I, because we are virtual and we cannot see all the other community members who are attending this meeting, I wonder if you have a count of how many people are on this call?
Approximately 220, but that includes the people in the room as well, so.
All right, that's a fantastic number. I think true community and advocacy is really hard to feel when we cannot feel the presence of one another. So thank you for sharing that. I remember a couple of years ago when there was a controversial garage presented to be built at Dow's Lane and there was a big opposition and I remember how packed the CPR was. And, you know, it seemed very impactful and it resulted in change. And I hope the urgency of the 220 members on this call kind of convey that same message. I have one question about the timeline. I think the target date makes sense for an outer bound and I was wondering if we could have some guidance on an inner bound date? And if I'm looking at the calendar correctly, the next, there's really only another board meeting before March 23rd, which I believe is March 9th. If I am thinking of it correctly, that that would be like the next possible date a plan could even be presented to the board. I just wanted to manage some expectation.
Yeah, well, as the timeline that Dr. Harrison set forth, the expectation is that the recommendations will be brought to the board by March 23rd. But as he also said, if there are interim steps that in his work with all of the stakeholders, to be brought forward sooner, he'll look to do so. So right now, though, the timeline that's set forth in the presentation is, you know, we expect our March 23rd meeting where we'll
you know, we expect our March 23rd meeting where we'll have a, I guess, robust discussion around the recommendations that Dr. Harrison is going to bring forward on, you know, a increased attendance and what that may look like.
Okay, thank you very much.
So next we have Catherine Lee, 53 Round the Bend Road in Tarrytown.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yes, hi. Thank you for allowing the community to provide feedback. I too had a comment and suggestion about the Flex Wednesdays. In particular, I'm wondering if we might be able to follow the model that the Tarrytown schools are using and that they alternate full in-person learning on Wednesdays between cohorts A and B. So that one week cohort A would be attending Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And the following week cohort B attends Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, full day on Wednesdays in person. It seems like that might be an immediate way we can ramp up the in-person attendance, given that perhaps some of the other objectives will take a little bit more time to analyze before they can be implemented. That was one comment. The other one regarding rolling out the increase in attendance across grades. My child is an older student in high school and I feel that even the high school students, even the older students, really need to be back in school in person full-time. I understand at every grade level, there are needs that need to be met. But I just wanted to stress that even the older students need the benefits of that in-person teaching and that interaction with their instructors. And especially the older kids as they're getting ready for all of their post-secondary plans, it's really critical. This is a, it's a really, really critical learning stage for them. And I just don't want that to be overlooked as we decide how we're going to roll out the various grades. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Nick Isadlau, 95 Eiler Lane in Irvington.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation that you've provided. I just had one question. Uncertainty is one of the, you know, the worst parts about this time. And as we look at the April 30th target, I'm wondering excluding a community outbreak or a true sort of rise in the numbers, which would blow everything up. What is the, and Dr. Harrison, this is for you, what is the single greatest risk in your mind of that date actually slipping? And moving farther out? Or do you think that that's really kind of a line in the sand and that and that the community can effectively begin planning against that timeline?
Yeah, I appreciate the question and the concern. I do believe that it is an achievable objective and that we should be seeking to have a recommendation and that would be received by the board no later than the 23rd of March with implementation no later than that day in April. As we said before, there may be a variety of iterations or a phase into the approach that could take a number of different areas into consideration, whether that's looking at days of attendance, grades, increasing particular grades or schools, any different variation that may be dreamt up by our committees based upon our readiness. So I do believe that is a responsible target date for us, understanding that it could potentially happen sooner.
Thank you. Next, we have Alison Agusback, 3 Emory Road in Irvington.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'll also save time with a amazing thanks to all of you for all of your hard work and I do want to just recognize the board and the administration in the in the amazing way that you have managed to keep our schools open to the extent that you have this whole time. We've had barely any closures in our district because of the way that the hybrid model is set up and the allowance that it affords, has afforded us to stay open during very high COVID moments. And I, like all of us, are grateful to see that the numbers are finally seeming to drop and people are getting vaccinated and normalcy is out there on the horizon somewhere. I'd like to reiterate Catherine's comment as well. My, you know, I have two kids, middle school and high school. My daughter's a junior, arguably the most important academic year of her career. And we're here hybrid and it's no one's fault. Like it is beyond any of our faults. So I feel everyone's frustrations. We all have them. We all have concerns about our kids' emotional well-being. Living with two teenagers in lockdown for a year is, has its own set of challenges. So I guess I just wanted to, you know, have everyone appreciate that. From a timeline standpoint, it would seem to me that we definitely wouldn't want to go back full-time before spring break just from a, again, to lose what we have, to go back full-time for a couple of weeks to then potentially lose what we have because we're going to be on another break. I mean, I'm sure that comes into it. Into your planning, but I understand that from a just logistic standpoint. I can't speak to the Wednesdays. I'd love to have my kids back in Wednesdays every other week too, but I'm assuming there's a reason why that hasn't been happening. But my two questions, really my specific questions were, do we have to do partitions? Like if the community is not feeling like that's automatically necessary, is that something that we have to do? And B, there are teachers that have been virtual this whole year. And how does that fit in if the kids are going to be back more? Will those teachers still be virtual? Or obviously it's a case-by-case basis, but something for you to talk about in the committee. I'm not expecting an answer right now, but like I know my son hasn't met his social studies teacher. I'd love him to get the chance to do that if, if that's possible at some point, but I know there are reasons for that. So my two questions were, and again, you don't have to answer me now, just throwing it out for the committee, but do we have to have the partitions? Because that to me honestly feels like overkill if everyone's wearing masks. And if that's holding up the process or making things more cumbersome for kids or, or staff. And then also just how the logistics work with those teachers.
Thank you.
And just quickly, thank you, Allison. No, they're not a must and, and I believe that the idea of sourcing them and, and that would not delay our process whatsoever. With respect to teachers that have medical accommodations, they would be evaluated on a case-by-case basis as, as we continue to move forward and understand that those are granted on a time-driven process and are regularly evaluated with our own district office staff, our attorneys and our medical staff as well.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kelly Turner, 130 Deer Track Lane.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
And so thank you all for staying up late tonight while we're all here. All here staying up late. I just wanted to reiterate many of the points my fellow parents have made, which is that remote learning, remote learning is really not good for any kids. It's also not great for the teachers. It's not good for the kids' mental health, but it's especially just not possible or practical for the youngest kids at Dow's Lane. So I'm the mother of a first grader. And even the Wednesdays for three hours and 40 minutes are torture for him. He, just like Christina said, he's asking after 45 minutes, is this going to be over soon? So many, many of the other districts have given up the Flex Wednesdays, Hastings, Dobbs, Scarsdale. They gave them up months ago and I think a lot of us parents are very frustrated that these Wednesdays are still remote. It's just a no-brainer to give us the Wednesdays back right away. I would say, you know, as early as next week, next Wednesday. But if we need two weeks notice to, you know, so that working parents like myself can rearrange their childcare schedules, then that's fine. But I think the majority of Dow's parents would want Wednesdays back as soon as possible. The only argument that I've heard in these board meetings as to why we still have them is because the teachers are really benefiting from the learning in the afternoons. But last year, they had professional learning one hour a week or one hour every other week. So we had early dismissal every other Wednesday. Now they get three hours of professional learning every single Wednesday. So I think that while it's great to have the teachers doing professional learning, while they're doing that, our kids are suffering. They're suffering at home on Wednesdays. So those, that needs to come back right away. The other thing I want to comment on is this whole three to six feet thing versus the barriers. So at Dow's Lane, you, you guys have been saying from the beginning that there's just not enough room. We're not Chappaqua, right? We don't have the big buildings that they do, so we can't do six feet. But we've known that since June, since you brought the architects in. So how can we have an order these plastic barriers back in June? Because that's the only way we're going to get kids back in Dow's, right? You're either going to spread out into the cafeteria and art room and music room, which means you're going to have to split up the classes and you're going to have to hire more teachers. Or you put them all 20, 20 kids per room and you use the plastic barriers. So I think we should order these barriers immediately and install them over spring break and get Dow's Lane back in school the minute spring break ends. And I don't really see any reason why that can happen. And if it's a funding thing, then I'm happy to lead a fundraising drive with this community to raise money for plastic barriers. I also think it would be a smart investment, given that variance may be present for us next fall. And if a variant comes, we can just put the barriers back up and we can keep going to school. So those are my suggestions and I certainly hope that, you know, I think getting back to school by April 30th, which really means May 1st, that means we have six weeks left in the school year for the kids to suddenly be in person. I really don't see why we can't accelerate this and get them back right after spring break. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Gen, 61 Havermyer Road in Irvington.
Hi, so I have a quick question and then a couple of comments. My question is, Dr. Harrison, in your presentation, you noted something about bringing back kids with IEPs who are in ICT classes back sooner or back in some other fashion. I hadn't heard anything about that and I have a son who's a first grader in an ICT class who has an IEP. So I was wondering, I think you said something about second to fifth graders, but I don't know if I heard you correctly. So I was just wondering if you could answer that question about whether this is something that will apply to my son and what that means. And then my comments are very much in line with the other parents. I'll just be very brief to say that Wednesdays are a disaster in our household. I have a kindergartner and a first grader. My first grade son is the child with IEP, but my kindergarten daughter doesn't do any better with the remote learning. They are both pretty much done within half an hour in and running around and I've realized that hovering over them is not any more effective than not hovering over them and doing what I need to do. So it's just completely a lost day in terms of learning and they don't even stay in front of the screen. So I just urge you to bring our kids back on Wednesdays as soon as possible, like the other parents have done. And then just to say that, you know, I understand the target dates of March 23rd and April 30th, but hoping that things can be accelerated and our kids can get to school even sooner because the, you know, the mornings that we're home are also, you know, fairly lost in terms of learning potential. And then I have one more question about what will actually happen when the kids do come back to school full-time and whether the specials are going to continue to be remoted in to the schools, into the classroom. So the kids will be kind of sitting in their assigned rooms the whole day or whether there'll be some possible movement so they can get that break and be in different environments with their children. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lisa, so you made a number of comments. I'll speak to a couple of them and suggest that maybe you could follow up with the principal later for some specifics to work backwards that when we think about specials, we do not have a plan in place. It's some of the logistics that we have to work out when we're increasing the number of students, how that will actually play out in those particular scenarios. With respect to students in elementary ICT, it was for looking for four-day experiences in the elementary schools. Our students in K and one were already in a four-day experience, so we extended that two through five. As it pertains to particular students' needs and IEPs, if you have further questions about that, I would encourage you to, to reach out to PPS or Dr. Cantor, who would be glad to assist.
Thank you. Next, we have Diana Rubin, 3 Hillside Terrace in Irvington.
Yes, hello. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, thanks. Thanks so much. I'd also like to emphasize, as others have tonight, that time is of the essence to get our students back to full-time in-person learning. And it really seems that the way to do that is to pursue an incremental approach. So starting with the youngest learners, K through five. So, which I think, you know, the science backs up. So we don't need to wait for the April 30th date that was laid out tonight, but we can start that process on a rolling basis. For example, Dr. Harrison, you mentioned tonight that barriers are much easier to implement for K through five. And so if we decide to go forward with the barriers option, I would hope then that we would move forward with that process for K through five first, while planning is in place for middle school and high school. And obviously, we want all the students to get back to school as quickly as possible, but to the extent, you know, it's easier in one school or building or for one group, age group than another, then, you know, I really hope that we pursue that approach. Also, as others have said, I also support, you know, starting with an alternating Wednesdays in-person model. I think others have mentioned this as well. You know, I think the parents are really willing to help. You saw in the beginning of the year that, you know, the school buses were going to be a problem. So you asked what, what families were able to opt out of school buses? And I think you had an overwhelming response to that at the, in the fall. And, you know, everyone is, is really willing to help in whatever way the district needs. That includes fundraising, but also, you know, I think just operationally on the ground, on site, I think you can really, you know, look to the parents and enlist our help because we're really here for you. We really appreciate the thought that has gone into this entire year since last March. And we know that it, it has been nonstop for all of you. And so please, you know, look to us to support you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Steph Rodnick, 49 Westwood Circle in Irvington.
May I unmute it?
Go ahead.
Okay, awesome. Hi, everybody. I just want to say, reiterate. I'm sorry, I'm so emotional about this whole process. What Allison and Catherine have said, because we haven't heard from as many older school parents as we have on this call. Our high school students, especially our juniors, which I have, are not suffering because of virtual learning, but they cannot reclaim this junior year. They cannot make connections with, with the teachers that they need to make to get teacher recommendations to go to college. These teachers don't know them. My son, Justin, has a guidance counselor who's new to the district, has never met him in person and is expected to write a recommendation about him to go to college. It's everybody is suffering, K through 12. The K and one parents should feel blessed that they have four days in. I know that they're suffering because they're young and I know that parents both work. But our high school students don't have that much time left in the district to regain what the K and one students will be able to regain when they get to second grade and third grade and beyond. So I, I implore you that these Wednesdays maybe are looked at as an opportunity to bring some of the older kids back. bring some of the older kids back, to do workshops for the teachers, to get to know them, maybe to, I can't think of the word. I'm trying to think of workshop is the only word. But anyway, my point is, is that my kid has 14 months left in the district and he can't go backwards. And I, I think that the entire process will be looked at from the top down, not just from the bottom up. So I appreciate all the hard work you've all done and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Aziz, 60, Main Street.
Hello?
No, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me okay? All right, parent of Dowslane first grader, thank you for taking my comment. I wanted to reiterate the importance of bringing back the youngest kids, restate the stress that it's putting on, on families, on children. This is precisely the time when they learn how to be learners and they just aren't, they aren't doing that right now. I won't speak for others, but rolling back the bad habits that our little ones are taking on now is going to be a long and painful process for everyone, teachers included, over the coming years. And every day in this mode is going to make that harder. So here in the reopening committee, still needs time to put together actionable plans. And the district has long known how difficult it would be to adapt our buildings. And speaking as an architect here, it makes me very deflated, very frustrated. And I'll echo what someone else said, with more transparency around these issues, the families here, the community is willing to help if it's funding or whatever other solutions we can help find, but you have to be transparent for that help to come out. So, you know, requests would be to bring back Wednesdays immediately and also really think about the emotional wellbeing of our students. If you aren't doing that already, if you've started, please don't, don't hit pause on that like was done with the reopening plan. I know everyone is overloaded now, but that issue is going to be with us for years after this pandemic is over. Don't lose sight of the enduring impact of that. And I'll just close with a question I don't think was asked yet. I apologize if I missed it. Has foregoing spring break and keeping our kids in school because they really need contact hours been explored? Will it be explored?
Thank you for the question. It has not been a consideration. We have a contractual number of days with our employees and if we were to revert those vacation days to instructional days, there would be significant financial responsibility on the district's shoulders. Additionally, it would be mandatory, mandatorily negotiable because we'd be changing the terms and conditions of our employees' employment.
Next, we have Rebecca Niesel, 91, Deer Track Lane.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for all the work that you do and the opportunity to speak. I'll keep this brief, but I'm a parent of a second grader and I would like to share my support for my other Dowslane parents in asking for Wednesdays immediately and to accelerate the timeframe of returning our children to school full-time as soon as possible. I'd also like to offer my assistance to the district in helping either fundraise or otherwise problem solve to make this possible for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sophie Jeff, 18, Richmond Hill. May also be under Armando Rivera.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work. These are just very challenging times for all of us, so thank you. A quick question, if, and I don't know, I guess it could also be discussed, it does not have to necessarily be answered there, but just, I'm curious to know, and I'm a big fan, of course, of the Wednesdays as well, but I just wanted to ask, when, when the children hopefully do get to be in school for longer, I'm curious to know what that's going to comprise of, if it's going to comprise more of them sitting at their desk, just sitting at their desk, because at the moment I have a daughter in kindergarten and as it is, she's having a hard time. You know, they, they don't do anything and it's sort of heartbreaking. I understand why, but I, I'm wondering if they are in school for longer hours, which I'm a big advocate of, if that there is more, they're able to do more things in kindergarten? Because I can't tell you how heartbreaking it is for my daughter, who would usually be someone who would love and adore and excel in school, to, you know, just be so frustrated just sitting at her desk for two hours. So thanks very much.
Thank you. I believe, you know, certainly there's going to be challenges and we're not going to be able to be up and as active as we typically would have in any classroom and especially a kindergarten classroom. But when we think about what is on the horizon is spring and we are, the snow is going to melt someday, the sun is going to shine and we're going to have the opportunity to take advantage of the beautiful Dowslane campus. So I do believe that there's going to be opportunities for movement that's going to engage the kids a little more than that really stagnant stationary opportunity that's been before them. I'm sure that our wonderful team at Dowslane is going to get our students up and moving once they have the opportunity.
Thank you. Next, we have Blake Guzman, 35, Beechwood Road in Irvington.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. Thank you to Dr. Harrison and the board for allowing us to express our concerns and ask so many questions. It is so appreciative. I want to share my first grader experience, my sweet almost, I'm going to actually get teary-eyed, my sweet, almost always happy six-year-old who always enjoyed going to school, loved school, excelled at school, absolutely dreads remote learning on Wednesdays. It's painful. She and her classmates are struggling with what should be a fun first grade and it's not fun. I'm asking to please consider the youngest students who are trying to school on Wednesdays, at least to start and please as soon as possible because it's impacting my family greatly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Amanda Levanos, 3 Blueberry Hill Road.
I do not believe she's here any longer.
Okay. So with that, we have Giuseppe Interlandi, 9 Mount Pleasant Lane in Irvington. And I'll say if there's anyone else out there that still wishes to comment, please put your name and address in promptly because we are just about at the end of our comment period.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, thanks for letting the parents speak their mind because to say that we're frustrated is a major understatement. This has been a challenging year as a parent, both working parents of a second grader and a kindergartner, keeping them in front of a computer with taxing jobs, essential personnel, we're all essential, we're all putting ourselves at risks. And doing this in a way where we can keep people safe is very effective, but getting these children back in school is very important to start with Wednesdays, moving on full-time from K to 12, especially with the younger children, Dowslane. You did mention something about contractual obligations for teachers. There are many schools to include, private schools, public schools in the area that are at school full-time. And how about the obligations of the parents who are paying these high taxes to move in here, comparing these schools to private schools? We'd like to see our children excel, move forward, have the interactions in, in-person learning and to accelerate this. To wait till April 30th is, is, is just way too long. This has gone on too far and we really need to move forward and accelerating, getting these kids back in school ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tammy Peterson, 15, Hudson View Park.
I'm not seeing them in the meeting any longer.
They just posted it.
Yeah, they, look under P, as under Peterson.
Oh, they just came back in.
Ms. Peterson, if you unmute yourself, we'll hear you. Sheila. You just left. Technical issues, I suppose.
Yeah. So appears that Ms. Peterson's having technical issues, so. Yeah, so again, as we said at the beginning, you can always send an email to theboard@board@irvingtenschools.org or also you can email Dr. Harrison as well and you will get a response. So maybe that Ms. Levanos is back, if you're back. Jay, if you could recognize Ms. Levanos.
I'm not seeing either of them.
They have to. Yeah, I'm not seeing it either.
So, so at this point, I'll say that our next public meeting is March 9th here and also via Zoom. So if we could have a, excuse me. So with that, we'd thank the community for their engagement this evening and please stay tuned for the future meetings where these issues will be discussed further. So again, thanks, everyone, for your comments, your, your feedback. We appreciate it. And with that, can we have a motion to adjourn for executive session for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to the employment history of a particular person? All in favor? Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.